Good evening, everyone. We welcome everybody that's here in person to our council meeting, our city council meeting. It is Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'd also like to welcome those who are on YouTube Live and hope we have a good meeting tonight. We have three members of the council with us tonight. The others are on vacation or something. Anyway, we have three. That's the only way we can do business. So we would like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here that would like to lead us in that?
I'll do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Please stand. Repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lynn. We'd also like to have an invocation or an inspirational thought. Is there anyone that would like to do that for us tonight?
I will.
Thank you, Betsy.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful to meet together to discuss issues and projects within our beautiful Santaquin City. We are thankful for the country in which we live, to be able to gather under pleasant circumstances. We are especially thankful for the rain that we are receiving this evening. We pray for those who are not able to join us tonight, that they may be protected. We pray for the residents of our city, that they may seek accurate and truthful information, that they may discern between truths and untruths, and seek to do good things and serve one another and show kindness. We pray for the employees in our city, who are so diligent and hardworking, that they may know how much they are appreciated, that they may be safe as they carry out their duties every day. We pray for those around the world who are in unsafe and dangerous living conditions. Please guide us with wisdom, help us to think and express ourselves clearly, and to discuss the items on the agenda this evening, to make the decisions that are best for our community and our residents and our employees. And we say these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Montoya. All right. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, if anything, on the agenda tonight? I guess I need to make one. There's an agenda item we have tonight that the company I work for is being awarded a contract in Santaquin, with Santaquin City, and I need to declare that I'm an employee only. I am not an owner in the company, and that's my declaration. So if nothing else on that, we'll go into our consent agenda. We have the minutes of our council meeting, our work session meeting on August 3rd, 2021. Twenty-one. We're 20 years farther down the road. And also the minutes of our council meeting on August 3rd, 2021. So the council had an opportunity to read those, review them, and is there any corrections or additions? Okay. We also have the bills, their invoice register of August 17th, 2021, $463,513.34. If you've had a chance to review those, any questions or concerns on the bills? All right. We also have agenda, our consent agenda items, number four, the award of Graham Fire for the SCBA compressor for the fire department. Any questions on that there? And item number five, resolution 0806, 2021, the fiscal year 2021-22 auto lease agreement. Any questions or thoughts on that? All right. I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilman Meacham. Any further discussion on the resolution on there? If not, Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
And Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, public forum. Do you have any signed up tonight, Aaron?
We do not.
Okay. Yeah, would you check to make sure?
I have 99.9%. We do not.
Okay. Is there anyone here that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to address the council? Wow, you're safe tonight. All right, we'll move on. We have awards, though. First of all, recognitions, item number six, introduction of the new Miss Santaquin royalty. Who's going to do that introduction? We'll let them do it? All right, come on up. Come behind the podium there, all three of you. Stand in order. There you go. Usually the queen's in the middle, but that's all right. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Molly Mortensen.
I'm Jade Haymore, the first attendant.
And I'm Karen Rowley, second attendant.
Okay. Tell us about yourselves. Anything that you would like us to know?
My platform this upcoming year is find confidence, make the world your stage. And so this next year, I plan to do different service projects according around my platform, which is that. And so some ideas I have are like talent shelves and a prom with adults. So hopefully I see you guys there.
Wow.
And yeah, and different social media challenges. So make sure to look at our Miss Santaquin page to look at the challenges going on. And yeah, that's just kind of what the plan is for this upcoming year.
Okay.
Great.
Can you tell us who your parents are? I know there's some of us that weren't there the other night. And so tell us who your parents are, and maybe one good thing about them you admire of them. How's that?
My parents are Chris and Liberty Mortensen. I admire their love for each other and their example of love to me.
Good for you. Good for them. Thank you. Okay?
My parents are Andrea Haymore and Mike Price, as well as Sean Haymore and Kristalie Haymore, step-parents included. And I love that they can all work together, even though there's four of them to help me in my life.
Yeah. Congratulations to Jade. She was the second attendant last year, so she's moving up. Next year, maybe the... All right.
My parents are Emily and Brian Rowley, and I really admire their generosity towards others.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service. It's coming. I know that it can be, as Jade knows, it can be sometimes hard, but we appreciate everything you do for the city. And I know there's a lot of people that look up to you, especially the younger kids. And now you get to represent the city, and so I know you will represent us well. So thank you. And you're welcome here anytime. Come, give us an update on what you're up to and where you got. And I know you plan on going to school this fall, but we want you, you're close enough, you can come out back and help us out. So thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to take away from what you said, but I really do appreciate it, what this organization has done for my family. I always want to tout it as unbelievably good for girls. I had a daughter that was Miss Santaquin and another daughter, one of the attendants. And what it did for them and their courage to stand up for what they believe is just, it's incredible. So it's a great organization. Take advantage of the opportunities you have this year to serve and to stand up for your platform. It's a good thing for young women. So I appreciate you and the organization very much.
Thank you. And also kudos to the directors, Keela and Hannah and the rest of them.
She's no longer a director.
Oh, well, she's, she's still supporting. I know that. She supports mom, too.
She's a great resource.
Yes.
Took four people to replace her. That's pretty good.
All that goes on behind the scenes. Thank you for all that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, could we get a picture with, we get the picture with you and the royalty? Or maybe the council of the council wants to be involved in that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
You missed the dunk cake, right?
Did you grab that dart?
No, I did it the first year.
You did?
How about, how about one of you gentlemen on the side of the bed?
Okay.
There you go.
Just sit over a little bit.
Maybe.
You gotta stay there after.
Queen steps straight. Get out of the way. Mayor, can you step a little closer? Make a little closer. Okay. One, two, three. Everybody else, somebody?
They're way cuter than the rest.
That's the man.
We are.
Congratulations.
I'm not a castle anymore.
Thank you so much.
Thank you too.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have business of the month. Are you going to announce that then?
Yep.
Ben, come on up and tell us.
All right, so in fact, I can take this off here. So on behalf of the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce, we want to recognize Farm Yard Fresh as business of the month. They have contributed quite a bit to the chamber and to the community. A couple of the things that they've really helped us get going this year is the hometown market. They've helped us kick that off and have been instrumental in getting that running. Also have done a wonderful job of finding people for the breakfast club to come and present topics and training items for local businesses and things to help continue to improve local businesses and how they're performing and things of that nature. So really want to recognize, recognize them. And Michelle couldn't be here tonight, but she told me that you have, I think, is it over a mile of rows in your garden beds in their backyard there? So...
And front yard.
And front yard, yes, inside yard.
That's awesome. I love that.
It's great.
Yes, they make very good use of their property there. So it's awesome. Appreciate the produce that they provide. So with that, we'd like to congratulate them and present this business of the month award.
Yeah, it's kind of funny that we ended up getting this for August, because last month, the July and August are some of the busiest months for us. And unfortunately, Isaac had COVID at the end of June and was hospitalized for a lot of July. And sorry, I'm going to get emotional. It's really thanks to the community. We have a lot of people from Santaquin step up and help us and volunteered a lot of hours to kind of help us hobble along through July. And so we're very honored to receive this award for August Business of the Month. And we really enjoy being here in the community and contributing to the Chamber of Commerce and hope to continue contributing to both of those going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you so much.
When we first started digging up his yard, I thought, what is going on? Escapate the whole area.
Congratulations.
It's really beautiful.
Thank you.
Molly Mortensen is the queen.
Okay. The next recognition is new employee introduction. John, are you introducing?
I am.
All right, come on up.
Man, council, you heard my pleads and my begs for a little bit of help. So we were able to hire Megan on with us. Megan Wilson is our new engineer in training, or EIT is, we abbreviate that. It seems like we like to abbreviate a lot of things. But she comes in, she's helping a whole lot in subdivision development reviews, also in starting to go out in the field a little bit together, start working with some of the contractors to bring in some of the items that we need for subdivision development and those type of things going in. So she's really jumped in a whole lot, has been a great help, has learned a whole lot, I think. As I have seen her grow and learn a whole bunch as we've been doing this last, last three months, almost four months now. So she's been a great help. I told her I'd let her take an opportunity to introduce herself, but she's been a great help to me as we've gone through it and helping the engineering department not to be so busy. We're still busy, but able to handle that a little bit better.
Good. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, Megan?
Not much else to say, I guess. I'm excited to be here. I'm originally from Moses Lake, Washington, which is also a pretty small town. So I've loved being in Santaquin so far, kind of get a little bit into the inner workings. And I just graduated from BYU in December. So I'm excited. It's cool. Thank you for letting John hire extra persons.
Good. Welcome to Santaquin.
Only great people come from Moses Lake. Seth Perrin's, the city manager of Santa, of Spanish Fork, is from Moses Lake and his wonderful mother. And that's been good to get to Hondoham over the years, so.
All good. Thank you for coming. Thanks, John. All right, awards. Item number nine, CMGC award Summit Ridge Tank and Booster. So you know?
Yes, Mayor, Council. So as you know, we have need to construct a tank, pressure irrigation tank and a booster, and quite a bit of pipeline to and from Summit Ridge. It's in our master plan. We've been under design with Hanson and Louise for the last couple of months, and it's, they're moving up on the 30% design, which is when we typically bring on a CMGC contractor. We did put this out to RFP proposals on request, our own website, state notification websites, et cetera. So we've gone through the full process there and have gone through our normal, fairly extensive CMGC review process. We appreciate Jason Callaway, John Lundell, myself. We appreciate Lynn, and also members of Hanson and Louise staff, helping us with that, with that review and evaluation of the proposals that were submitted. We had eight qualified contractors that attended the pre-proposal meeting. Only four of those submitted proposals. And just a great, any one of the four that submitted had the qualifications to do it, but the experience both in Santaquin and with the types of projects that we need to build, as well as the proposed fee schedule is very favorable for Santaquin. So we're recommending that we award a CMGC contract to Vancon to be able to construct this work. Again, this amount that we have here, as I've indicated in the memo, is just the beginning. This is to help us get through and work on the design. One of the things that we accomplish very well with our CMGC process is that we eliminate risks and therefore change orders as we go through the process, because we actually have a very qualified contractor to help us look at all the constructibility issues, all of the things that maybe from an engineering side we don't see, but from a constructibility side, they help us with. So this will go and get us through the construction management portion of it, as well as the design, and then the actual construction of the tank booster pump station. And the water lines will come to you as we continue on with the design, likely in the October-November timeframe, maybe into December at the latest, to have that guaranteed maximum price come back to you, that we will know all of the full costs, et cetera, for those facilities. Happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. I have, do have a recommended motion, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any thoughts?
I don't know. I was impressed, like Norm said, with all of the bids. But overall, I highly recommend this also, so.
I would just like to make a comment, if I may, but I appreciate Councilmember Meacham participating in this process. I've participated on other projects in the process of bid opening and review and evaluation and scoring. And I just want to let residents know, it is a very detailed, thorough process that takes time and review and a lot of thought and discussion, and that there is actually a scoring process, that qualifications, experience, not price, but it's not all based on price. And it's not all based on who's done work before, or it's, it's very comprehensive and detailed. And I, as a resident, speaking as a resident, am very reassured that that process exists and that it is used for projects like this.
Okay. Anything else? My thoughts on it, being an employee of the company that was awarded this contract, looking at the other contractors that bid it, they're the top contractors in Utah, as far as I'm concerned.
They are.
Is being a contractor. And so that says a lot about our city and the processes that we have in place. Contractors don't like working in some places because of, you know, difficulty with whoever or whatever. And so to have these contractors bid this job is kudos to us, I think, and grateful for that. So, and I'm grateful to be able to work close to home, I think. So I hope. Anyway, I look for a motion on this, if there's anything else.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we award the CMGC services for the new Summit Ridge Pressure Irrigation Tank Booster Pump Station and Water Lines to Vancon Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $320,000.
We have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Can I just do a, hey, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, item number 10, Design Contract Award, Center Street CDBG-funded Storm Drain Project. You two know?
So Mayor and Council, this is a proposed award for a design contract for design engineering for the CDBG funds that we got. CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, and it is administered through Mountain Land Association of Governments through the, using county funds that have been allocated through the federal government. This is for a storm drain project that we applied for over a year ago and have now been authorized to go ahead and move forward with this project to get it designed. And then we will obviously have a construction contract coming before you at some point in the future to, after the design is done. This is, again, for engineering services, a professional contract. It, as far as similar to the CDBG process that we do, that process has already been done by U.JUB engineers, is a qualified contractor, pre-qualified contractor in the U. Pool. And we've been able to discuss with them, and their proposal is very favorable as far as the cost, being able to help us out, because there's some efficiencies there, since they're already working on the Main Street project. They can do some of the work completely separate, but with some efficiencies there to be able to help us out on that design. This would do storm drain from basically about the north entrance to the, to the post office on Center Street North and to and including the intersection. So there will be potentially curb and gutter there, storm drain inlets, widening of the asphalt, et cetera. That will all be figured out as we go through the design. But that's what's been contemplated at this point in time with, with application for the MAG funding.
From the post office until?
100 North?
100 North.
100 North.
Including the intersection, yeah, that one block. But it doesn't, it doesn't quite reach Main Street. It's just the, right, right close to the north entrance to the, so if you know where you go in to turn around and go drop your stuff in the drive-through mailbox, it's right there to the north. It doesn't, doesn't come all the way down to Main Street, but we anticipate that the Main Street project will pick up where this one drops off.
Yeah.
So constructibility-wise and planning-wise, again, there's some efficiencies there, and we will tie into that when we do the Main Street project. This project will likely be constructed before the Main Street project, just because the funding is only available until about, I think it's October, middle of October next year. So we, this one, as far as the construction of this one has to be done next year in order to, to finish out the funding before the end of their fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Speaking of that, I don't mean to change topics, but whose responsibility would it be to fill in and repair that gigantic pothole at the post office drive-through?
I think we'd have to look at it and see if it's in our right of way, or if it's in the post office's property.
Okay. If we could do that, that'd be great. It just keeps getting bigger and deeper.
Whereabouts are you talking about, that same north entrance?
It's at the north entrance of the drive-through to drop off your mail.
Okay. We'll look at that and see. That will likely be covered as part of this project, but we'll look at it and see.
Thanks.
So constructed next year, but when do you anticipate this would start, in the spring?
Or? Yeah, we would, we would have the design done sometime this winter and then go out, hopefully for bid, for construction bids, early in the season, so that we can get favorable pricing. But when I say next construction season, it really just depends on, you know, typically asphalt is available from April 15th to October 15th, plus or minus, depending on weather. So that's, that's the construction season that I'm talking about next year. It doesn't have to wait until October, but the design will be done during this, this next, like I say, three or four months. It'd be done by the time, hopefully the end of the year comes around, and then we would just start going out to bid, maybe in February or March, maybe January, just depending on what we feel like is most favorable for the project.
Beautiful. Love it.
And I did read in the memo that JUB is in the pool.
They are in UDOT's pool, huh?
For qualifications-based.
They are. So again, the same process that we talked about with the CMGC that we went through for the previous agenda item has already been done by UDOT, and that's how they put their pool of engineers together. Rather than reinventing the wheel, they allow us to use that. In fact, if you remember right, the Main Street project that is funded by MAG.
Yeah.
That requires that we use a engineer from their pool. That's correct. This one doesn't, but again, it just makes sense to use the efficiencies that can be there to, to help us make sure that there's good congruity and connection between these two projects when they're completed.
Okay.
What's the estimate on this project?
So we estimated the project originally at $315,000. The CDBG funding is 235, and our portion was about $79,000, $80,000, if I remember correctly. I'm pretty sure it's in the memo.
And that's doing one block?
That would be doing one block only. Storm drainage, basically. So inlets, underground facilities for infiltration, curb gutter, no sidewalk, drive approaches would be included, et cetera. It's, yeah.
I'm just trying to run the numbers through my head on how many blocks we have in the city that haven't, don't have storm drain.
Yeah, I did that a couple of years ago.
And what that might cost.
Yeah, I did it a couple of years ago, and I think it was in the 50-plus range. 58 sets of blocks like that would be needed.
300,000?
Right.
Costs are just going to go out.
Therefore, that kind of gives you an idea. And again.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We do it next week, right?
Yeah, we're not doing it all at once, are we? Well, it is an interesting approach. My understanding, I don't know perfectly, but my understanding is American Fork and Spanish Fork used similar projects like this over the years to not necessarily do all of what they did in their core area of town, but to fill in gaps and that kind of thing. They did this, this type of funding.
Every year, they do a project through CDBG.
Yeah.
And the funding comes there. Of course, it's the LMI, the low-income, moderate income.
Right.
And so depending on the areas in town, you have to meet a certain requirement there to be funded. So there isn't a reason why we don't, don't have a project every year, just like they are. And...
So this is very specific on the LMI. It was every one of the adjacent property owners that were getting picked up were the ones that had to be surveyed for the LMI, the low-to-moderate.
Who did that, door to door?
Councilman Miller.
I think Councilman Miller helped with that. In fact, did all of them. In fact, did all of them.
Thank you.
So but yeah, that's a that's a very good point and that is that that this could be a way for the city to fund some of that twenty-six to thirty-one dollars.
We know it's coming. We have to do it.
We talked about before in the storm drain.
And so let's do a project every year if we can do it that way.
Absolutely. Now, to be clear, we can't apply for another project until this one's done, so we might miss a year of funding next year, but that's the.
There are other things we can we can apply for.
Absolutely.
It doesn't have to be the.
I think we've even been, this is off topic, but City Hall, I think we've been awarded a contract for raises and stuff for the seniors kitchen.
Yeah.
For the kitchen and serve the seniors. So yeah, it'd be a very good example of of good good use of CDBG funding.
You know, we all pay taxes to the federal government and this is one way we can get some of it back. So we really need to be be doing this and and getting what we can back from the federal government, even though there might be strings attached.
Possible, would it be possible to 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 look at what it would take to do the sidewalk?
Um, sure. We we have to be really, really careful with this because these are federal funds, which means it's buy American, disadvantaged businesses, Davis Bacon wages. So it it does kick the costs up considerably because you're you're paying federal wages for all of your construction activity. You have to buy American, you have to do other things.
There's some of the strings.
It's not a bad thing, but it does.
Even though you can get cheaper.
The the red tape or the the strings that the mayor talked about, it increases the costs.
It would be better for us to finish the project and come back and pay second just the sidewalk.
Okay, so we can keep that in in the lineup then.
Yeah, because we do need a sidewalk down Center Street.
When the federal project, when the federally funded portion of the project is finished, we can go back and and add the sidewalk to really polish it and make sure that.
We could, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, I would like to do that and come back to it when it's done.
Okay.
If I'm still here. Maybe I'll be in the ground.
Anything else on this? Any other questions, concerns? It's a great project. I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a contract with J U B Engineers for the Center Street Storm Drainage Improvements Design in an amount not to exceed, no, amount is after. Sorry, may I start over again? That always messes me up, that amount is after. I don't like that English. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
I don't know, I can't I can't take more than one.
I can't read. I flip words around in my brain to make it correct English.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a contract with J U B Engineers for the Center Street Storm Drainage Improvements Design.
Slow down.
In a not to exceed amount of forty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and eleven, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars.
God, I I know exactly what you meant there. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Miller. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. All right, let's done with the business. Uh, move on to.
I'm not afflicted either.
This is public forum. Yeah, this is public forum again. What's the deal? Oh, building permits. There we go.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so Ben's pulling it up. As you can see, year to date, we have three hundred and ninety-one residential dwelling units that have been permitted. Uh, that's broken down to a hundred and ninety-four, uh, single fam- single family and one hundred and ninety-seven multifamily. So as you can see, uh, we're we're just a little ahead of pace where we were last year with the single family, but have quite a bit more multifamily and and still just growing like like crazy. And I'm sure this will probably exceed our our, um, our previous year of being the the most building permits that I think Santaquin's probably ever had. So, uh, yeah, lots of growth happening in Santaquin City.
Jason, may may I ask the same question that I've asked before?
Go.
Where are those multifamily units located?
So the majority of them are going to be down in Summit Ridge, all the townhomes that are being built down there.
Summit Ridge towns, which were approved in the year two thousand in the Summit Ridge Development Agreement.
Yep, and those were, uh, those were approved and those started before the the development agreement expired this past December. So that was a a project that was still under the the auspice of the the development agreement before it expired, so.
When it was in a planned community zone.
Hmm.
Yeah, twenty-one years ago. Thank you.
And then if you want to scroll down.
I think there's five of those buildings that have residents in them now, so.
Yep.
And it seems like every week another building comes online and and people are moving in and there's a need.
Yep.
Police officers, teachers, nurses.
My nephew.
And then we have one new business license to report. This is a a home occupation or preschool, Learn With Me To Taught School, owned by Heidi Ross at fifty-nine South, three hundred West.
Okay, we need more on that list, don't we? All right, thank you. Any questions for Jason on that? Okay, uh, we've done new new business reports. City Manager Benjamin Reeves.
Don't have a heck of a lot to report tonight. We just want to express appreciation to all the staff and the council and the Youth City Council and royalty and everybody who was involved in Orchard Days and all the work that that it took to bring that together. Um, we're having a a meeting tomorrow night with all of the volunteers that just kind of lessons learned, what what went well, uh, what we need to do differently and how we can make it even better for the years to come. They, uh, our Community Services Department has so many fantastic ideas and it had a lot of passion and excitement. One of the things that was added this year was the Chalk Dance that the Youth City Council was involved in and and that was just tons of fun, watch those those teens have something to do within our community and participate in and a good, clean, wholesome activity. And it was it was good to see our our youth out there and enjoying themselves. But there's other other events that are coming up and and it's very likely that the the Community Services Department may come to the council and and look at new ideas. Um, you know, when we were looking at the Orchard Cove Park on the north years ago, it was a a park that was kind of isolated, kind of out there on its own, and it had a ton of vandalism. And the council at that time considered potentially getting rid of that park because it was kind of getting beat up. And the council decided to go in entirely different direction and invested in that park and really expanded it and and put in the extra tennis court, the basketball court, the bathrooms and 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 that, uh, quickly was followed by the LDS Church building a church there and the homes that surrounded it and lots more eyes. And now it's just a just a a great resource to the north end. And so sometimes we we limp along with with certain things like, for example, the light parade that I know Jason talked may talk about in a little bit and and other chamber things. Um, but maybe taking it to the next level and just exploring ideas. Um, I I know in the last community that I served, the light parade struggled for many years until, um, the city decided to to back it a little bit more and put fireworks in. And, um, and then that really made it, you know, the people were coming out and then the vendors started coming out and they started having bands and barrels with with fire, uh, that they had in there and hay bales that people could sit down and watch the fireworks. And it just made for a really fun Christmas Christmas atmosphere. And so not that it has to be that way, but different ideas. I know that that Shawna Joe and and John are are just talking about all sorts of great things to make our community that much better.
Yeah, real fast, check your boxes. Shawna Joe has an activity planned for a family activity for Halloween. They're going to do a a march with the costumes and trick-or-treat candy earlier in the day, like at four o'clock. So they've invited us to be a part of that and and I I things like this. That's what it's all about, is getting family activities that can benefit our whole city. And and I think I love the direction we're going.
Yeah, they're talking about a cornhole tournament for during Halloween where you dress up and come out and participate in that. Um, I look forward to the prom and being able to to ask my wife to that. Maybe she'll go with me.
Get your tux rented now.
That's right. Should be fun. So good things ahead. Um, on Thursday night, we have our community meeting with the, uh, uh, general plan and we truly invite the public out, let your voice be heard, be part of the process and and, uh, I'm sure Jason will talk more about the components of it, but this is a great opportunity for the community to come together in that meeting. A lot of effort has been put forth on behalf of of the committee and the people who are supporting it. I really tried to be almost silent in this in this entire thing because this is the people's voice. This isn't the staff. This is the elected leaders and the planning commissioners and and key members of our stake stakeholder group that have been putting this together and and now it's going to engage the public as well. Um, I think that's all I have unless the council has questions on anything.
We'll get to you. Okay, community, oh, Assistant City Manager Norm Beagley.
You can skip over me, that's fine.
I can't see you, so I forgot you're here.
So Mayor and Council, Friday of last week, Friday morning, opened up the first half of the intersection for the realignment of Highland Drive and Canyon Road and seems to be working famously, just like it should. It's it's going to be great to have that done. As we've talked about before, the other leg of it going to the southwest will be done dur- during this paving season. Get that all done and it will be fantastic to have that full connectivity all the way from the south exit to the north exit on a fronted road. Um, and again, we've talked about the CMGC process and and John talked a little bit about the the development and and staying on top of that and doing a great job that way. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I don't have anything else, I think, to report on at this point.
Anything for Norm? Okay, Community Development Director Jason Bond.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so Ben touched on it. Uh, I don't know if there's much more that necessarily needs to be said. Thursday evening, seven o'clock, CS Lewis Academy, our consultant will be there. Uh, really, it's presenting four scenarios, not to to pick one scenario over another, but to to really extract the attributes that you like in each of those scenarios to make the scenario that that will kind of help take us in the next step of this this general plan, uh, process. So, um, yeah, we really hope that the community will come and and give that feedback. This is not the, uh, the end of the general plan update, but it's it's a definitely a key, uh, checkpoint, if you will, uh, to 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 get the direction, um, that we need to move forward and and start drafting that plan and and shaping the future of Santaquin City. Uh, the only other thing I'll I'll bring up is is, uh, I should say, before I move on, in that there will be, uh, our consultant, uh, for the active transportation planning effort there as well. They will have kind of a draft, uh, citywide, um, recreational, active transportation type master plan of 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 how that system might look. And so we would love for people to come and and provide their feedback on that as well. It would be anything related to trails and bike lanes and things like that. So, uh, a lot of things, it's kind of a night of planning and and a lot of direction that will help us, uh, moving forward. Uh, the only thing I'll I'll report on is is, uh, things are really starting to pick up. We we're getting a lot of applications, a lot of people, um, moving forward. Uh, I informed the planning commissioners and the the council of of six public hearings that were set last Friday. Um, so there's there's a lot of things that will be moving forward and and a lot of developments that are really, uh, becoming active again and and development proposals that are are being polished so that they can, uh, come through the city process and 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 seek approval so they can, uh, uh, move forward. So, um, I'm happy to go into any details of the things that are happening or any proposals that are that are before the city right now, but other than that, I haven't got nothing else to report.
You got nothing. Good for you. Thank you. Any questions for Jason? All right. Uh, let's see.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
You thought you were off the hook, right? Um, has there been any feedback from the Planning Commission discussion on the Pedersen Development, the feedback that that the public and the Planning Commission gave to them? Um, are they, where do they stand on that? What are their thoughts?
They, uh, they've had a couple of 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 their people out of town, but they have reached out to us and want to meet with us to to discuss a lot of the feedback that was was given at that meeting. So they they're well aware of a lot of the many of the concerns and in fact, all the concerns. Uh, I think there was loud and clear. Uh, so they're they're looking to engage us and and really talk about next step moving forward. Obviously, that was concept plan, it was feedback. And they're going to be working on on, uh, a preliminary plan and there's a lot that needs to happen before that that is ready. So I think after after all that was said in that meeting, there we're we're trying to coordinate a meeting probably later this week to to meet with them and 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 discuss that and and kind of, you know, work with them to to get a a a good preliminary plan , uh, so that can be considered.
Okay, and then that plan will go before the Planning Commission as well.
It it will go to the DRC, uh, and get a recommendation from the DRC, go to the Planning Commission, get a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then I'll come to the council for your consideration of approving that preliminary plan.
Yeah.
And then after that, however they decide to phase it, then it would come in just bits and pieces of of, you know, would however they they end up phasing it. So frankly, with this development, there's there's still a lot of uncertainty exactly how that all will look because.
Right.
Because there was, you know, a lot of different, uh, routes that they could go in in, uh, in making this development happen.
Okay, thank you.
Rod Greycliffs, are they in the same boat?
So, yeah, Greycliffs is, I my, I think they, uh, they're, they're, uh, they, I think they they submitted a preliminary plan just a few hours ago. Um, I know that they're they're anxious to get that preliminary plan moving forward. Obviously, there's, it's a little bit different than Santaquin Estates. They've they've got a development agreement approved, so they, uh, the next step would be continuing to flesh out and and provides a a draft amendment to that development agreement, which really is going to be needed to to make some of the things that they want to do work. So that 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 is, uh, something that the council would would, uh, look at, but would probably, you know, kind of work, um, through the process concurrently. But, uh, yeah, they've they've got a preliminary plan that I know that they're working on and 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 I think they've submitted just a couple hours ago. I think I saw that email come through. Um, and then the their mask grading permit was tabled at the last planning commission meeting, so, uh, there were some some questions about interpretation of code there. Uh, I think we've got we've got some, uh, information there that can really help clarify some of the concerns that we're we're there with that, so.
Okay. All right, anything else for Jason? You give him time to think now or you've had time to think? All right, uh, Councilman Miller, anything to report?
Yeah, uh, just not a not a whole lot. Uh, going back to the rodeo, spoke to John today. Uh, we had seventeen hundred seventy-eight paid attendance attendees, uh, four hundred and sixty-one comps. That included the rodeo club, rodeo participants, royalty staff and vendors, Little Miss, Santaquin participants, total of, uh, two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine people in for Friday night. Um, Saturday night had, uh, three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine paid rodeo attendees, uh, two hundred, or excuse me, four hundred and twenty-one comps, again, rodeo club, rodeo participants, royalty staff, vendors, total of thirty si- three thousand, six hundred and seventy people Saturday night at the rodeo. Those are his numbers, pre-regi- the the pre-registration software, the onsite credit card, Square Machine and cash. So pretty, he he feels confident with those numbers. Uh, we believe this is the best turnout that we've had going back, looking at records and whatnot. So great work, uh, just seconding everything that Ben said and the mayor said with with John and his staff, literally like spot on. And and I work with them. I mean, we we saw this, you saw this at the the parade and obviously the whole week, they're they're doing really good. It's 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 really good to see. So you, we saw him today with the award in the in the work session, so excellent teamwork all around.
I had a concern, though. I got hungry during the rodeo.